Commissioner District Two, Tim Sheldon.
Here as well.
Commissioner District Three, Terry Jeffrey.
Here. Correspondence and organizational business. Could you please report the correspondence received by the Commission?
George Radovich and Joshua Luck applied for the Veterans Advisory Board. Barry Northness applied for the Housing Authority Board. The Liquor and Cannabis Control Board sent a list of businesses with liquor and cannabis licenses due to expire within 90 days. And Rosemary Julia Vasilek applied for the Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging Council.
Thank you. Timberland Regional Library Cheryl Hayley.
Good morning.
Here for a quarterly report.
Yes, thank you. Well, actually today is the 2015 State of the Library Report. Thank you very much.
Oh, it's bigger than that.
It is bigger. So, thank you for this opportunity to share with you the highlights from last year and a few highlights of what we're working on this year. 2015 was a year where staff continued to meet the needs of 485,000 residents through 27 libraries across five counties. People of all ages were invited to discover and interact with the library's library program services and collections for learning enrichment and entertainment. So, in 2015, if you were a child, you could have been one of the 23,322 children and teens who attended over 600 programs around the summer reading program of last year. You would have had access to the best in educational toys, games, and interactive displays in the 27 children's areas in the libraries, thanks to the major efforts of our youth services staff. And you would have had access, and you still have access, to the new AWE Early Learning Computer Stations, offering bilingual, Spanish, and English activities, educational online activities for ages 2 through 8. These stations offer 70 titles of software titles and over 4,000 learning modules. In 2015, if you were a local entrepreneur, or a job seeker, or changing careers, or continuing your education, or transitioning from the military, you could have attended one of four business forums at the library to learn about free library business resources. And if you couldn't make it, we did film one of them at the Lacy Timberland Library, and it's available on our YouTube channel. So, all you have to do is go to our website, click on the YouTube icon, and you have access to that program. Also, in 2015, you could have purchased a Grace Harbor Transit bus pass. So, in 2015, staff at Grace Harbor Library started to sell bus passes. We're talking eight locations now, up from the three that Grace Harbor Transit had before that. And this is a pilot project. We believe that it is the most unique one, and one of the most unique ones in the country between a public transit agency and a public library. In return, the buses are promoting us inside their buses, outside their buses, and they're seeking a $1 million grant to provide Wi-Fi on their buses or inside, and then that way users will also be able to download their services. Also, in 2015, you could have attended a Boot to Business workshops. These are monthly workshops at JBLM, where staff go and teach transitioning military about library resources that can help people transition from military to civilian life. You could also have attended what's called the Employment Pipeline Service, and this is put on by DSHS. And again, staff go there and provide orientation to 19- and 20-year-olds, and this is their first foray into the workforce, and so we're providing, again, that resource about how to get that first job. And also, in 2015, for the first time in Timberland's history, the library director, myself, was appointed by three of you, and the 12 other county commissioners who served on the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council. And that's a big game changer for both Timberland and the five counties we serve. So, thank you very much. In 2015, you could have engaged with Timberland in a very innovative way. We decided to invite our residents to submit short stories based on living in the Pacific Northwest, specifically the five counties. And we had over 200 local writers submit short works of fiction and images for the cover art, and we selected 15 of those essay, or short stories, rather, and an illustration, and that was our Timberland Reads Together for 2015. In 2015, if you were a library cardholder, you would have experienced enhanced collections and technology. So, we upgraded internet speeds to improve streaming service and wireless access. We provided new projectors and televisions in all 27 libraries. We provided online library card registration to make it easier. We've provided with our Overdrive, so for those of you who download your books onto your Kindle or Milford device, it's now, Overdrive, the service is now integrated into our library catalog, making it easier for you to search titles. We also added eBooks and comics offered now through Hoopla. Hoopla is Netflix on steroids because it offers not only streaming video, but streaming eBooks, streaming comic books, and so on. So, cardholders can now check out 20 items per month on Hoopla. We also added a new language database called Pronunciator, where this database teaches you access to over 80 languages and how to pronunciate in that language. There's also a component in there on how to learn music. We also expanded our social media. It's much more robust now. We have added LinkedIn, Instagram, and Teen Instagram. And most recently, we have added, on our website, go to trl.org, to the right, it says "eTutorials." Click on that, and you have many tutorials now on many of these downloadable services that I'm talking about today. 2015 or 2016, in both years, we did what's called the Impact Survey, which is offered by the Information School at the University of Washington. This online survey gauges how people use our online services for learning about e-government and learning about finding a job and health and fitness. And so, this year, we had 2,200, close to 2,300 take this 20-minute online survey. And the nuggets to take away, 118 users used online resources to apply for a job. Of the 118, 73 were granted an interview, and 45 were hired for a new position. So, this is the takeaway about using our resources. 137 reported learning about exercise or fitness, and of those, 115 made a change in their exercise habit. 31 users applied for a degree or certificate program, and of those, 21 were admitted to the program. 18 users applied for financial aid. Of those, 15 received financial aid. So, now for statistics. Statistics about Mason County. In 2015, 3,647 new library cards were given out to residents in Mason County. Their circulation for the three libraries in Hootsport, Shelton, and North Mason, in Belfair, close to 396,000 for library circulation of the physical collection. In terms of Mason County downloads, 57,284 downloads of eBooks, audiobooks, whatever. And the library door count, 207,000 people visited the three libraries in 2015. Overall, overall, close to 29,000 new library cards were given out last year across the 27 libraries. That's a 3.5% increase. So, a lot of numbers here, but I want to share some stories, and some very heartfelt stories. And Blake is here today. I forgot to ask you to introduce yourself. So, Blake is here today. He's the interim library manager at the Shelton-Timberland Library. And Patti Ayala-Ross accepted another position and is now the director of the library in Puyallup. And so, this is a story about Blake. It's about Blake and Sean. They've been running a writing group, or facilitating a writing group, at the Washington Corrections Center in Shelton. They're both very committed, are making a difference in the lives of the men there. And we received emails from the staff of the Corrections Center. And the note says, "Blake, the men of the writing group are so fortunate to have you and Sean. They may not speak of it to the two of you, but they talk about the values of Washington Corrections Center Writing Group to those of us who sponsor other programs. It is a huge contribution. You do good for the rest of us, too." And another one, I just want to share one more story, and that is, we had a summer reading program in Hootsport last year, and this is a lot of people, 50 children and adults showed up at the Hootsport-Timberland Library for a Puppets Please Marionette. So, I want to leave you with a quote by a young adult novelist. Her name is Liba Bray, and she talks about the importance of libraries, and especially in the summer of 2015, where we celebrated heroes and heroines with children. So, she writes, "Libraries are a force for good. They wear caps, sorry, they wear capes. They fight evil. They don't get upset when you don't send them a card on their birthdays, though they will charge you if you're late returning a book. They serve communities. The town without a library is a town without a soul. The library card is a passport to wonders and miracles, glimpses into other lives, religions, experiences, the hopes and the dreams and strivings of all human beings. And it is this passport that opens our eyes and hearts to the world beyond our front doors. That is one of our best hopes against tyranny, xenophobia, hopelessness, despair, anarchy, and ignorance. Libraries are the torch of the world, illuminating the path when it feels too dark to see. We must not allow that torch to be extinguished." Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate your report.
You have any questions? Yes. Very lofty, right? Very lofty.
I'm especially thankful for the children's programming. Everything you said about libraries, while that's a big shoes to fill, but most importantly for me is that the children, your children's programming is outstanding.
It is outstanding. And so, now we have at least three staff going to the Washington Library Association Conference next week, and they're doing breakout sessions. They're teaching now librarians across the whole state. And it's great for us because we don't have to pay for it. The Washington State Library is paying for their way because they're giving a whole-day pre-conference on specific training around Storytimes.
I just utilized one of your services for the first time here recently. I'm a, I actually started listening to a few audiobooks.
Yes.
And believe it or not, there's technical audiobooks.
Very technical.
Yeah, I didn't, so it's not a waste of time, so I decided to do that. But then, you know, another thing you could actually do is they have the children's books. You could actually buy the book, have your child listen to it, and try to read along with it.
Yes.
Quite a good tool to use, so.
Yes.
No, I'm very appreciative. But I just found into, you guys have been telling me for a long time, but I just did it, so.
Every day, you can learn something new using our resources.
Andrew, I have one question for you, and I really appreciate the Timberland Library. You've changed over the years with the times, obviously, and technology, but, and you don't have to answer right now, but I'm just interested in the facilities you have now. You have facilities in Belfair, Hootsport, and Shelton.
Correct.
What shape are they in? What do you see coming up? You know, or those kinds of things.
Good question. So, Shelton is a city-owned building.
Yes.
And so, they're responsible for the maintenance of that building. In terms of Hootsport, we own that building because it's an unincorporated area, as you know. And so, that, we're putting in a new carpet this year. That's the extent, and we're going to buy the carpet tiles before September, before the price goes up. And we also, as an aside, we also own the library in Amanda Park. And Amanda Park, near Lake Quinault, will be buying carpet tiles, too, for that. That's a big project, actually, for us. Belfair is an interesting one, the North Mason one, because of the expansion of the highway there. We're waiting until all that's done, and then we have to do work in the parking lot and so on. So, we're waiting for that. We just added a new book drop in the North Mason one because people kept on ramming into it, so we had to buy a new one and move it over. I believe they're also getting a new bike stand. That library is in pretty good shape. I mean, we did a retrofit of all the lighting last year to save us on that, but overall, that's a stunning library. It looks, it looks pretty good. Shelton, you know, Patty did a lot when she was here, and so did the city, so I'm not quite sure what's there. We are now advertising for that position, and so the new manager will be picking up the reins on that. But I'm not hearing too much about Shelton right now. Blake, do you know anything?
It's in pretty good condition. The carpet was done about four or five years ago.
Yeah. So, new carpet, definitely, in Hootsport. And then, Belfair, we're waiting for the construction to happen, so next year, we're looking. The year after that, or I think it's the year after that, it's the, I think it's the 25th anniversary of that building.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Melissa McFadden with a news release.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mason County is seeking applicants to fill two positions on the Mason County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, or SWAC. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee reviews and makes recommendations to the Commissioners regarding solid waste and special waste management in Mason County, including disposal rates, disposal options, waste reduction, recycling, household hazardous waste, and composting programs. Mason County is seeking an interested citizen from Commissioner District One and a local elected public official. Committee members are appointed for a three-year term. Participation is voluntary, and members meet once a month. I think right now, they're meeting once every three weeks to try and get the solid waste master plan off the ground. Application forms may be obtained from the Mason County Commissioner's Office, 411 North Fifth Street, Shelton, or by calling 360-427-9670, or visiting our website, www.mason.co.mason.wa.us. Applications will be accepted until positions are filled. And I understand we have two more, but we've contacted the SWAC committee members, and they have indicated that they would like us to go back out and solicit new interest for their positions. So, we will have two more openings coming up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I have a news release. A Thurston-Mason Behavioral Health Organization Advisory Board. Thurston-Mason Behavioral Health Organization Advisory Board is the result of the integration between the Thurston-Mason Regional Support Network and Thurston-Mason Chemical Dependency Advisory Boards. Integration between mental health and chemical dependency was a result of Senate Bill 6312, I believe passed in 2014. The Advisory Board is a citizen advisory board which represents the citizens of Thurston and Mason Counties. The role of the Advisory Board is to advise the Thurston-Mason BHO, its Behavioral Health Organization, governing board, on matters relating to mental health and substance abuse disorder services in Thurston and Mason County. Each member is expected to represent all citizens of the two counties in the recommendations and advice. There are several openings on the Advisory Board, especially for tribal representatives and residents of Mason County. Each board member is appointed to a three-year term by the TMBHO governing board. Interested citizens may obtain an application at the Mason County Commissioner's Office as our address, or by calling the office. And you can visit the Mason County website. Applications will be accepted until positions are filled. And I just wanted to share that the Advisory Board needs Mason County representation. It's, over the past, when it was a regional support network, it was almost exclusively represented by Thurston County residents, and I think that where the delivery of services is provided is indicative of lack of representation in Mason County. So, I would strongly urge people to consider applying to be on this Advisory Board. It's one meeting a month in each quarter. They'll be here in Mason County.
Madam Chair, I'd like to second that because, over the years, we have been very much underrepresented in Mason County in these issues. So, if there are people out there that would like to volunteer that commitment, and thank you for letting us know that it's one meeting a month, it would, it's a very important position to provide input from our community. Thank you for putting that together.
Is there any other organizational business to come before us? Thank you. That takes us to item number five. This is our open forum for citizen input, an opportunity to address the Commission and the public on any issues that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to address the Commission, please raise your hand, and you'll be recognized. Is there anybody who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? Mr. Bloomfield, former Commissioner, Steve Bloomfield.
Heavy on the former. Steve Bloomfield, 391 Southeast Dominance Road, Shelton. Commissioners, I just quite, kind of wanted to let you know that you've had an opportunity to meet my daughter-in-law recently, and she had a heart attack last night.
Oh.
She, her heart quit beating for a number of minutes. They revived her, did emergency heart surgery, and she's okay. She's doing well this morning. Probably 10 years ago, or five years ago, she may not even survive. It's one of those miracles. But it comes down to prioritization of what's really important in life, and it really brings home the fact of how trivial and insignificant some of the stuff we deal with, that becomes so important to us, ingrained in our day-to-day life, that really isn't that important. And we have to be able to release and move on to the really important things, because you never know what tomorrow's going to bring. And the other thing I wanted to say is thank you to the library. We, they were, they're so open-minded. They even published a piece for me in a book a couple of years ago. That's amazing that they would do that. And I look forward to an opportunity to do it again if they're so open-minded again in the future. But let's prioritize our life to what really is important in it, and not forget those issues, because you might not even be around tomorrow.
You know, Steve, me and Commissioner Jeffrey interviewed her. What an impressive person. I mean, we won't forget her. She was, she was probably one of the most professional people you could ever run into. It was very impressive.
She's wicked smart.
Yes, she was. Actually, I think we may have said something like that, wasn't we?
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anybody else who would like to address the Commission? Cheryl, hello. I love the hair.
Cheryl Williams, 309 West G Street, Shelton. As you can tell, I'm blue because tax season's over. So sad. This year, I worked for AARP's Tax Aid, and we had three locations, the Belfair Library, the Senior Center, and the Shelton Library, where we did tax returns, Belfair on Wednesdays, on Tuesdays, Senior Center on Wednesdays, library on Saturdays. And I have some numbers here. In 2015, there were 306 returns that we did at the Belfair Library. In 2016, 319. At the Senior Center, 289 returns in 2015 and 322 returns in 2016. At the library, 205 returns in 2015 and 232 returns in 2016. So, you guys did great. Thank you very much for letting us do that there. So, a total of 800 returns were done in 2015 and 873 in 2016. So, if you guys hear of anybody that has problems, please recommend this program. It's great. It's free. People come in, they get their taxes done, they get it e-filled, they get a copy for themselves, they put it away in a drawer, and don't worry about it till the next year. So, please, it's a great program.
AARP, you said?
AARP, American Retired Association of Retired Persons, which I'm not really a member of yet, but. So, thank you, and thank you. And I'm also teaching a class on financial literacy at the library, which is why I wanted to stay around, from 4:00 to 5:30 on Thursdays, so.
Thank you for your volunteer work on behalf of the seniors. Thank you so much.
Oh, it's anybody.
Oh.
Anybody can come in and get their taxes done. We did a lot of earned income credit returns, which are people with children, so anybody of any age.
Like I said, volunteers is what, for our eyes, Mason County. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else that would like to address the Commission? Well, thank you, everybody. Hearing none, I will move on to the number six, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, go ahead, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that the minutes be approved from February 16, 2016, our regular business meeting, and 20, March 21st, 2016, the briefing meeting minutes.
Aye, well, second.
Second to approve the February 16 regular meeting minutes and the March 21 briefing meeting minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next item is on item number eight, the approval of the action agenda. The intention is to approve these items all with one vote. We will read through them, and if anybody in the audience has any questions on any of the items read, please raise your hand, and we'll address your question. Alternatively, you also have the opportunity to ask that any of the items be removed for a separate vote and testimony. So, I'm going to ask Commissioner Netherland to read items 8.1 through 8.4. Commissioner Sheldon, could you please read item 8.5 through 8.7?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, item number 8.1, approval for the Board to execute the notification of final cost of county road construction projects completed in 2015, performed by county forces. Item number 8.2, approval for the Board to authorize public works to solicit, award, and enter into contract for the procurement of materials and installation services to complete indoor/outdoor lighting retrofit project at the North Bay Case Inlet Water Reclamation Facility. Announcement of awards will be scheduled during a regular Commission meeting. Item number 8.3, approval of the agreement with I-Fiber One LLC for job recruitment advertising at a rate of $400 per month for a four-month term. Item number 8.4, approval to call for requests for proposals, RFP, for visitor information centers to be funded by lodging tax for services in 2017. The proposals are due by May 25, 2016. Specifications are available on our website at www.co.mason.wa.us, or by calling the Commissioner's Office.
8.5, approval to call for requests or proposals, RFP, for tourism promotion, small festival marketing to be funding, funded from lodging tax for services in 2017. The proposals are due by May 25, 2016. Specifications are available on our website, www.co.mason.wa.us, or by calling the Commissioner's Office. Approval of the Puget Sound Local Source Control Program Interlocal Agreement with Kitsap County from July 1, 2015 through July 30, 2017. Kitsap County will provide technical assistance, site visits, and education materials, material to small and medium-sized businesses focused on best practices and proper management of hazardous waste and stormwater. And 8.7, approval to authorize equipment rental and revolving ERNR to declare certain vehicles and equipment as surplus and dispose of this equipment at the Washington State Surplus Sales.
Item 8.8, approval of the 2016 contract with Choice Regional Health Network in an amount of $4,000 for the Youth Marijuana Prevention and Education Program. 8.9, approval to authorize the Office of Public Defense to hire a three-quarter-time contract attorney for youth dependency cases at a rate of $4,500 per month from May 1, for May 1 to December 31, 2016. And finally, 8.10, approval of the Veterans Assistance Fund applications for necessity items, $150, utilities, $597.88, for a total of $747.88, as recommended by the Veterans Service Office. Does anybody have any questions on any of the items just read? Commissioners? Would anybody like any of the items pulled for a separate vote?
Madam Chair, may I have item 8.8 and 8.9 pulled, please, for a separate vote?
Okay. Any other quest, or any other request for separate vote? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the action agenda items 8.1 through 8.7, and also to include 8.10. We are removing 8.8 and 8.9 for separate votes.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
I move to second to approve items 8.1 through 8.7, and removing item 8.8 and 8.9 for a separate vote, and then approving 8.10. Is there any discussion? I just want to thank the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for all their work they're doing on the visitor information, or on the distribution of those taxes and tourism promotion. And these two RFPs are just continuing on the work that's been done, but in a, in a formalized contracted manner, so I really appreciate their work.
I'd like to comment on item number, what do we have here? Item number 8.3. I think this is a wise move to do some more local marketing on the radio station in order to try and bring people to come to work for Mason County that actually live right here in Mason County. And I think it's a great opportunity. I'd also like to thank our, our Public Works Department, who just left, because the way they've been handling our ERNR and our sale of surplus vehicles, they are finding a way to generate more money for the county, not just doing things the way it used to be done. They're finding new ways, and it's become very, very, very beneficial financially to this county this last time especially, so.
Thank you. Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Item 8.8, approval of a 2016 contract with Choice Regional Health Network in an amount of $4,000 for the Youth Marijuana Prevention and Education Program. We have Ben Johnson from our Community Services Department. Could you please introduce this item?
Sure. Ben Johnson, Mason County Public Health, and I work with the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition here in Mason County, or Shelton. And this specific topic relates to marijuana tax money that comes into our state and our county, and in this case, it's coming to, the Department of Health has contracted with the Choice Regional Health Network, which worked with seven different counties in our area, including Mason County. And this project is to conduct a county-wide assessment of marijuana use in our communities. So, I, you know, we just are getting started with this. I haven't even had any training on it yet, but from what I know so far, we will be getting an assessment out to everybody, and I think it's going to be electronic, probably Survey Monkey, collecting that data, sharing it with our region, and then sharing, coming back here and sharing it with our community. Hopefully, it's going to give us information, you know, who's buying it, how it's being sold. sold, if it's being done properly, who's using it, those types of things. And hopefully, we're able to use that information to provide more prevention education in our community.
Any questions for Ben?
I just have, I guess, a quick question, Ben. As a Commissioner, and we three, we get calls from constituents and people complain about things, and often, it's somewhat unspecific, and, but I did get some calls the other, last week, about a particular retail marijuana outlet that the caller said was, was, that young people were coming in, less than 21, and trading objects for marijuana. So I did call the Liquor and Cannabis Board and asked them to investigate, and as the laws are changing now, I think as of July 1, we'll be under a new set of laws, they weren't very forthcoming with any enforcement or investigation. So I think we do have a problem in the community, and I, and I'm glad we're doing a, a somewhat of a, of a overview here, a flyover to see, but I think it's a bigger problem than we think it is.
Right.
When we started with the cannabis regulation here, we, we talked about five retail stores in the county, and obviously, there's, there's, there's five in some of these small communities already, so things have changed a lot, and I hope we can get a handle on it, because I did ask the Liquor and Cannabis Board as well to rank the 39 counties as to what was happening in, in retail, and in processing, and what's the other category?
Growth, producing.
Producing, producing. So obviously, King County's way ahead in the product, in the retail, but we ranked fifth of the 39 counties in processing and growing, basically. So that, that's amazing to me, as, when you look at Mason County, it's the less than 1% of the population of the state of Washington.
Right. Well, as far as the Liquor and Cannabis Board, they, right now, they have the responsibility of going in and, you know, they hire some people that are younger than 21 to go in and try to buy and, and try to do that. I think they're doing that on a regular basis. I don't have those statistics in front of me right now. I can probably get some of those if you guys want to get that information.
But they're doing that with the legal ones, the 502s, but they're not doing that with the medical. And here in Mason County, one of the problems we have, which we can't do anything about, but we have several of them that are legal, straight out, flat out, illegal, shouldn't be open. We put stop work orders on, we've tried to stop it, but we can't get anywhere with it. I'm told by the person that's going to be out here, they're going to start coming down and closing down some of the illegal ones in July out here, when the medical and the recreation become unified. We just pray that that occurs with some of them, because imagine, just opening it up on a weekend and staying open and can't close them. We can't get them closed. As Commissioners, we don't have authority to walk in and just say, "You're done." We tried, but we couldn't get any backup on that one, so...
Ben, I have a question regarding the funding source for this particular grant. I'm assuming that because it's coming from, Choice Regional Network have been granted this, that this is the state money, it's not necessarily the local share?
Correct. Yeah, it was a state money that was contracted out to Choice, and they did, you know, a breakdown for each county. I'm not sure if, you know, for instance, we got 4,000 and somebody else got 5,000 based on, you know, this population, that sort of thing, but this is the amount that Mason County received for this project.
Okay.
So, and it's only goes through the end of June, so we haven't gotten a guidance on, you know, everything's behind. The fund, funding came in, in, at the end of December, 1st of January, and contracts are being worked out, and it needs to be spent before the end of June, so...
Gosh, that's too bad that they do these...
Hopefully, they have a good survey, and we can implement it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Ben?
Have you ever looked at the number of posts on Craigslist for, in the health and beauty section, for marijuana, for marijuana sale? I mean, there's a lot. I mean, it's very interesting how we may or may not be able to really restrain the sales because it's now so open, it looks open.
Interesting. I've never...
Be interesting, pardon me, to assess that.
Yeah, yeah, I...
Throw that in there.
See what it looks like. Like I said, there's going to be web trainings and that sort of thing that I'm going to have to go through, and then we're going to conduct. In the past, all our assessments have been just Shelton, because that's where the funding has gone through. This is the entire county, so...
Great, thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to testify, testify on this issue? Mr. Bluefield?
Excuse me, ma'am, a little slow today. Steve Bluefield, 301 Southeast Dominance Road, Shelton. Yeah, thanks for the explanation. It answered some of the questions I had, but it, it kind of ties to 8.9 as well, in that the cost of doing business. And I, I wasn't sure where the money was coming from, I didn't know what the intent of this expenditure was, and where it was going to go, and is it going to be effective? And quite frankly, I don't know if it's going to be effective with what you're doing. The guy that's breaking the law probably isn't going to tell you the truth. That's a little bit disconcerting, that we might be throwing money down a rat hole when we've got a $4,500 a month expense right behind it that's dealing with these kind of problems. Anyway, I, I think it's part of our overall overarching responsibility here as Commissioners, as community members, to answer these questions before we go down the road of, of doing this, and it's, it's a huge job. Thank you for what you've done. I appreciate it. I appreciate your continued effort at doing this, and thank you for what you can do, and if there's any way we can help as a community, or you need support, please ask community, okay? I think we could actually have some real important feedback.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to testify? Hearing none, and closed public testimony. Is there a Commissioner deliberation? Not idea.
I made my comments. I just hope we, we can learn what's going on out there. It's often, often as government is reactive and not proactive, and I think this is a way to start a little bit of proactive action. But again, I think we've got some difficulty with the sales to minors, some difficulty that needs to, needs to be brought under control.
You know, just to follow up on that, I, I don't recall where I got the stats, but I do remember reading a statistic, or not a statistic, but a report that said that was, youth had reported that it was easier for them to get marijuana than alcohol. And so, you know, I, I'll say it again, our medical marijuana laws in this state were almost like the Wild West. It was just, it is, and, you know, we'll have to wait till July to shut her down, and I hope the Liquor Control Board helps us, and I hope our Sheriff will step up and help us on that as well.
And I, just add one more thing. I, I think some of this, what I've heard from, from people anyway, that, that some of the merchandise that's being traded, if it is in fact being traded for marijuana, is probably stolen merchandise.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a, it's a big problem, and it affects everybody with home burglaries that have, have that difficulty, because we have a high rate of that in our county.
Further discussion out there?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the 2016 contract with Choice Regional Health Network in the amount of $4,000 for the youth marijuana prevention and education program.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve item 8.8 as stated in the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Thank you. That takes us to item 8.9, approval to authorize the Office of Public Defense to hire a three-quarter time contract attorney for youth dependency cases at a rate of $4,500 per month for April 1, or May 1 to December 31, 2016. Our Public Defense Administrator, Susan Sturggeon, is here. Would you please introduce this item?
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Susan Sturggeon, Office of Public Defense. Our request for this contract for an attorney position is a result of the huge increase in the number of dependency case filings. In 2015, the total number of dependencies filed was 123. January through March this year, it was 59 new cases. Each of those 59 new cases obviously has children involved, sometimes multiple children involved, and the judges are appointing attorneys to represent these children. The state does cover some of the children, but only once they are declared legally free, and they've been legally free, the parental rights have been terminated. So until the time the parental rights are terminated, the children need an attorney. I've been handling these cases myself. I'm currently up to a caseload of almost 50 children. These are children where I'm supposed to maintain contact, I'm supposed to visit them in their home, at their school, come back and report to the judge what their position is, and it's gotten so much that it's almost a full-time job for me, and that doesn't allow me to do any of my other duties, so I'm asking for a contract. It should be for up to 60 active cases, which I'm hopeful will be about the max that we're going to have, because as certain children either age out because they turn 18, or the state takes over their representation because their parents, parental rights have been terminated, we get new cases in. So I'm happy to answer any questions about what this contract involves, or why we need it, if anyone has any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have one. Thank you, Mr. Madam Chair. We did have a briefing a couple weeks ago about this, that I, I was, I was astounded at the numbers. So if, what you say, in 2015, there was 123 dependency cases. How many of those resulted in, in the child taking, taken from the home and placed with, in a foster home?
I don't have that exact figure. Probably 99% of them.
99%.
It's rare when a child is taken and it's not founded, because the department...
Yeah, no, I'm...
Generally, doesn't act unless it's really an extreme case.
Okay, and, and in 2016, we've got so far...
59 cases.
Until what date?
Through March.
Through March. So we could have 200, oh, well, we could have 240 at that rate?
Yes.
240 children?
That's, that's the number of cases.
Cases.
And each case could have, I have one case with five children. So multiply that out, I, probably the average is at least two kids per case.
Two, so that'd be 480 kids. That's like a whole elementary school.
Every other problem...
It's amazing.
Every other problem we have in the community with, particularly with drug addiction, with mental health issues, a lot of those people have children, and the state has to step in and take the children, and it's a real tragedy, and that's, you know, by, by representing them, we try to find what the best interests of the children are...
Sure.
And find a most appropriate placement for them so that they can move on with their lives, and it, it's a big tragedy all the way around.
Do you have, I'm not, sorry to ask you too many questions here, but how do we compare to another, other counties, other rural counties? Are we about the average, or...
Well, last year, we were about average.
About average.
This year, we've seen a spike, and I think part of that is due to some changes in the DSHS here in Mason County. Last year, they were understaffed for most of the year. This year, they're up to staff, and they have some new supervisors. It used to be last year that they only were likely to act where there were children under the age of 10. And if you had a 12, 14-year-old, they pretty much said, "Well, we got to worry about the babies." Now, because they're up to staff, they're looking at, at cases with older kids that are living in, in deplorable conditions, being abused, being subject to parents who are active addicts.
So it was a triage system, but now...
Now, we're getting to really where we should be, to try to help these kids.
To, and approaching 500 kids in a year that would be relieved from the home, from their parents, and then we need foster care for those children.
Foster care, or some of them go to family members.
Yeah.
But a lot of them need foster homes, and we have a very severe shortage of foster homes. A lot of these kids, I have one family where two kids are in Pacific County, one is in Pierce County, one is in Lewis County, and only one could find a home in, in Mason County.
We're looking at 500 kids. That's amazing to me. That's a huge number. Thank you.
Are the, are the reasons primarily drug and alcohol addiction?
Majority, but they spend, I mean, anything that you're, I have a 17-year-old who was being starved. No drug addiction, no anything, no criminal history of the parents, and they were starving the kid. And that's one that normally they would have said, "Well, he's 17, he'll be 18 in six months, let's not worry about him." He's now, gets to eat, and it's, it's rewarding from my point of view to see these kids really thrive when they get in what should be a normal environment and what a lot of us take for granted, and that goes back to what Mr. Bluefield was saying, like, you know, look at what's important. I think this is really vitally important, and it really could be life and death for these kids.
Sadly, we need to find other ways to, more ways to invest in that, because the truth is, this doesn't take care of any of that. It's just offset some of our, our workload, the caseload, but, you know, we need to perhaps look at other avenues that could actually have an effect on those that are out there. Just deal with them here so that we can keep within our, our work limit.
Laura Porter, former Commissioner, Mason County, has done a tremendous amount of research on something called adverse childhood experiences, and they've made a direct connection between any, your health going forward and any adverse childhood experiences or traumas in the home, as a child. And I would equate being removed from the home, or what happened prior to being removed, as something that will longitudinally affect your, your health at some level. It's predictors of diabetes, heart disease, and some very, very common chronic diseases. So these are going to be long-term, you know, long-term issues and societal costs. Are there any other questions for Public Defense? Thank you very much. Is there anybody who would like to testify on this issue?
Sorry to take up so much time. Steve Bluefield, again, again. I, I want to speak highly for, for Susan and what she's done, and, and the caseload that's there is, is way too high. It's way, this, this is a, this is a Band-Aid to the problem, unfortunately. Now, again, it goes back to the 4,000 bucks, education efforts, and trying to prevent that problem before it gets to her position where we have to pay for that public defense. It's a huge problem, and it's a growing problem, and it is absolutely unfathomable that in Mason County, we could have 500 or more kids in this situation. It's, it's unbelievable. And thank you for what you do, and I appreciate that, and the placement of those kids and their future depends on this being done and done right. So please, let's, let's get on with, doing what we can to solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to testify? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, ladies, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Conley Watson. I live at 140 Fox Lane here in Shelton. My problem being on 8.8 and 8.9, if we don't curb it now, the Sheriff is going to have that problem down the road. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to testify on this issue? Hearing none, and closed public testimony. Commissioners, deliberation?
Yeah, it's a beginning, beginning of trying to deal with it in a more effective way, and Susan, your, your staff, you know, obviously, we've increased the indigent defense budget more and more, and we're spending more this last quarter than we should, so we're, we're trying to catch up. So I guess there's no, no easy answer to this, but we live in a different world today, and we certainly can't have these kids enduring what they're enduring.
Again, you know, I'm, of course, I'm going to be a favor of this, but what you need to remember that this isn't a solution to any of the issues we were just talking about. The only thing that we're doing with this is taking the workload off of her so she can do other things, but she's already carrying this load. It's already being done. We need to find a way to figure out what we can do and how we can invest to actually have an impact on, on these family situations. Although this is good and this takes care of what we need, it doesn't take care of the child any different more than what we're doing now, so we need to look at some other options and maybe get some briefings on other opportunities to... to our...
And then, you know, one of the driving forces behind going out to contract on this is our public defense administrator is carrying a caseload way too heavy for somebody that's supposed to be assigning cases and managing a public department. And so we are acknowledging that we need to go out to contract on this. We had pulled it back in internally in staff, but this caseload increase has forced us to go back out to contract on this. And just wanted to share with the public that the Washington State Supreme Court and administrator of the courts, I believe, who makes court rules or standards for courts, have implemented caseload limits on local governments for public defense. And that has driven up our budget on public defense tremendously. We don't have those caseload limits in the prosecutor's office, but we do have them in public defense to ensure that people get equal representation under the law, regardless of their ability to pay. This has been a significant cost to the county and the counties across the state, and that's another issue that needs to be taken up at some level. How do we pay for this? Is there a motion?
I will move, Madam Chair, to approve item 8.9 to authorize the Office of Public Defense to hire a three-quarter time contract attorney for youth dependency cases at a rate of $4,500 per month for May 1 to December 31, 2016.
I will second.
It's moved second to approve, to authorize the Office of Public Defense to hire a three-quarter time contract attorney for youth dependency cases at a rate of $4,500 per month for May 1 to December 31, 2016. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. That is the, takes us through to, there are no public hearings, so we will go on to item number 10, Other Business. Department heads and elected officials, we have two items under Other Business. Frank Pinter, could you please approach the podium? We will be appointing some very key positions here in the county.
Frank Pinter, Interim Director of Support Services. The commission on last Tuesday requested that HR submit an offer of employment to two employees. One was Dave Wyndham as the Community Services Director, and Jerry House as the Public Works Director. Both of those individuals has returned those offers of employment. Both have indicated that they are very excited to begin their employment and contribution to the county. David's first day will be May 23, and Jerry's first day will be May 16, if the offer is approved and accepted by the commission today.
Questions?
Would you like to take them one at a time, though?
Please.
Madam Chair, I move with the approval to appoint Dave Wyndham as the Community Services Director.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Moving second to appoint Dave Wyndham as our Community Services Director to begin work on May 23. Any more further discussion?
I think he's going to do an outstanding job. I was very impressed. I've known people that recommended him in the legislature, that have worked with him in that tri-county area in eastern Washington, I think the world of him. They're going to be pretty mad at me, because he's being hired here, so I've got to lay low for a while.
I think we did a really good job on vetting. I religiously believe he's going to help frame that next generation of customer service and getting things done quickly that we've been trying to get and make happen. I'm very pleased with his decision.
Thank you. So go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, please, of appointing Mr. Wyndham as our Community Services Director, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Wyndham, and thank you to all of the applicants. Item 10.2, approval to appoint Jerry House as Public Works Director. Did you have any, you said both of them?
I said that at the same time. Jerry House is, his first day is scheduled for May 16, I believe. Yes, May 16.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to rehire Jerry House as our Public Works Director, Public Works and Utilities Director. I've known Jerry a long time. I was never a commissioner when Jerry was employed here, but worked with him quite extensively as EDC Director years ago. He lives in our county, he's been a longtime resident. He works at the city of Bremerton presently. And you'll have to explain to Mayor Lent why he's coming here. I'll leave that to you, Madam Chair. But he's an outstanding individual and knows our county very well, so I think we're going to do very well with him, and I certainly look forward to working with him, as all of us do.
I will second.
Okay, it's moved second to appoint Jerry House as the Public Works Director. I just want to share that, I don't know why, but there's this internal happiness around stealing employees from the city of Bremerton, or one of our larger markets, just because it's finally going the other way sometimes.
It's true. We do actually feel a little something when we do that.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Welcome aboard, both of you.
Thank you.
Are there any other, are there any department heads here that would like to address the commission? Justin Smith from our WCU Extension Program.
Yes, Justin Smith with the WCU Extension here in Mason County. Good morning, Commissioners.
Congratulations.
Wow, that, thank you. I would say, wow, that was probably one of the most unsettling conversations I've heard about the number of kids in this community. It's not what I'm here to talk about, but it's definitely a pause for thinking about some solutions to that. That said, I wanted to let people know that the, it's that time of year again, the plant sale festival is coming up for the master gardeners. That'll be on May 6th and 7th at Neyland Park, and flowers are going to be going up. And, yeah, so it'll be a great opportunity to support that program and to get your plants for your garden this year. We also, on May 4th, it looks like we will be giving a presentation on the use of drones for natural resource management at the Civic Center in conjunction with the Squawson Island shellfish biologists. So it'll be pretty interesting, if you're interested in flying hovering devices that can be used for all kinds of monitoring or surveillance. I'll be talking about some high-tech and low-tech ways to leverage those technologies. We have submitted several pre-proposals to use and to develop applied technologies with respect to these, to drones that are currently used in the Precision Ag Center in Prosser. And we're going to be trying to apply this in aquaculture setting to be able to identify inventory oysters, to be able to locate and identify impacts from stormwater, or not stormwater, but post-storm impacts, so like identifying debris to minimize the time that it takes for people to kind of survey the beach shoreline. And to also to identify and mitigate, or at least identify and map, the growth of Japanese eelgrass. So we've got several projects going on.
Great. And again, my thank you, I didn't get to talk to you personally around this, but thank, or congratulations on the Community Development Block Grant Award for microenterprise lending and training.
Thank you. I think we're waiting for contract approval.
That'll happen.
And all lending, thank you.
Are there any other department heads who'd like to report? We only have one left. Okay. That takes us to board reports and calendars. This is where we share with each other what we've done, what meetings we've been to where we represented the county, as well as any meetings we were at together for open public meetings, transparency. Who would like to start?
I'll give it a try. Last week, I missed our meeting. I was in, in, where was I? Anyway, I was in Missoula, Montana, and a meeting of the Northwest Power and Conservation Council. It was very interesting, because they write the plan for Bonneville, the Fowl, and what we do. And this is a tremendous amount of money involved, but I wanted to mention one thing that brought to mind by your comments about drones and technology. So there was a presentation by Dr. Michael Young from the United States Forest Service. And he and his colleagues have developed a method of detecting bull trout in streams, or they're, if they're there, or if they're not there. So the traditional way is you go out, and it's very expensive, to electroshock the stream, and the fish float to the surface, their surface, they're paralyzed basically temporarily, and you count how many fish. Well, they've developed a filter that you put in the water that detects the fish DNA, and they can specifically know right away if it's a bull trout. So in a, an area, I forget if he said it was about a 200-foot-long stretch of the stream, they have a 65% chance of detecting one fish, if one fish is there. If two fish are there, it's 100, almost 100%. And they don't know if it's detected by the urine, or the feces, or the scales that the fish are losing, or maybe the, something from the gills, but it works. And they're really concentrating on Montana, and the great thing about it is very inexpensive. Costs about $75 to do. And so what really helps is, when there's the controversy, is an endangered species in that stream? Do we have to protect it? You can find out very quickly, and it was exciting enough. And your comments about how much we can learn with this new technology that we didn't know before, or was just so, it wasn't cost-effective to do. So that was very interesting. I spent a little time with, at Little Rock Falls. Of course, their generation plan is back up in operation, which is an exciting thing, and that provides power to PUD-1 hydropower. The, out at Skokomish, in my district there, they are getting ready to go to bid on a new tribal center and youth center on Highway 101, just north of Twin Totems on the west side of the highway. There's a DOT site, they bought a farm, Moran's Farm, which is adjacent to the DOT site. They've done the logging, and now they're out to bid on the, on the site work. So that's an exciting...
Was it staging area, the DOT staging area?
DOT maintenance site, but the building won't be on that maintenance site. It'll be just south of it, adjacent to it, as I understand it.
Congratulations.
As I understand it. So I've just been talking to the contractors about it. Met with some Lake Cushman people there, they have, obviously, always issues there, too, with their homeowners association, some other things, but one of the things that we had just a brief discussion about yesterday was, again, the ability for citizens to use county roads for the use of ATVs. And I talked to one family who, that's been their recreation, and they're going to put the house on the market, they want to move down to Nevada, which is anecdotal, but they enjoy that type of activity. And in some of those other states, you can, and we have the laws now here in Washington to do it, they can use county roads to go to some of these old mining sites, like Virginia City and other places, and they have little roundups and meet up with their vehicles. So I think that'd be exciting for us to look into. And I did give a call to, also to the Squawson Tribe, left a message for Kevin Lyon to follow up on where we are with the island issue on the island. I know Frank's been working on that, so hopefully, we can get that completed pretty soon. The PUD-1 solar project has been fully subscribed, the first side of it, and they'll begin with the panels here very soon. Don't want to take you too long. Port of Hootsport has got their disc golf project rolling along. I was up there and took a look at it, it's really impressive. If you've never played disc golf, or seen the people that are, in the pro league, the really good people, they're really good at this. It's not like a little frisbee thrown at something. It's an amazing course in the woods, which no one really has. Most of these courses are way out in the open. And a lot of people from the clubs have donated time. They've got launching pads that are concrete, flat, big blocks, they're not poured cement, but it's done beautifully. The parking lot has growled, and they're expanding all the time and looking for, actually, it's going to bring a lot of business to Mason County. And Port of Hootsport should be congratulated for all the things they're doing with that. And again, yesterday, in that same vein of excitement, was the Ridge Motorsports came in. Thank you for arranging that, and exciting possibilities there as well, so we'll be looking into that. And a couple of other things, but I won't take your time, so we'll move on.
Thank you. Congratulations, Port of Hootsport and Skokomish Tribe. A lot of great things happening there. Is it open, the disc golf course?
Yes, it is. Still being worked on, but it's...
Is it, do you pay a fee to use it?
No. Nope, it's free to the public, parking, and it's in the woods, which is very different, so it's extremely challenging.
Mm-hmm. Have some tournaments here.
One of the best things about those type of courses, if people realize, you can do huge courses in small amounts of land, because you go here, here, you can even use the same hole from a different direction, and it counts as a hole, so they can have a, you know, 50-hole course before you know it, and take them all day to accomplish it. It's pretty amazing. But what was it, last year, we found out it is the fastest-growing sport in the United States? Pretty interesting what you say about it, because I hadn't even heard of it until last year, but it's the fastest-growing sport in the United States. But Canal Coordinating Council, they just, to give you guys some knowledge, they went ahead and approved a letter of recommendation for this water creative project. And we're on our way to go out, to begin the process, start to go out for bids on our own, instead of just taking projects that everybody wants to do. We're getting closer and closer to that. I attended a Mason Transit Authority hearing on routes. They're looking at doing some changes in some of the routes, including up in North Mason. They need to add the hub into the route, so they have to move some times around. I, North Mason, a group of people in North Mason are looking, doing some big construction up there. I attended the very beginning of their pre-op before trying to head out and go to, it's the very end of the EDC's Forest Products Roundtable. North Mason Alter Group, up on top of the hill just outside of the urban growth area, there's a big, huge, flat area that, it's always amazing to me, that's not in the urban growth area, because that's one of the only buildable lands in Belfair, but it's not, it's just outside of it. But there's a lot of concern because of the Belfair bypass and where it's going to go, where it was going to go in the old days, and a lot of it has changed from where they were first contacted, but there was years ago, they were told, "It's coming now, you're selling now," and, you know, so they hear it all again, they're all wondering what to do, and are they going to be able to sell their property, make profit? You understand how that goes. So we attended that. Representative Griffey also attended that as well. Our regular EDC meetings, Mason Transit Authority employees. I was asked to meet with one employee, I showed up at the restaurant, and there was a passel of employees. Caught me off-guard a little bit, but we had some conversation about that. You and I both attended the Greatview School District ribbon-cutting celebration. Wonderful, wonderful, what a wonderful school. Being from North Mason, we've always looked at Greatview as a little bit special of a school. They have their own little group, they only attend up until high school, in their own school district. High school, they can go south, or they can go to North Mason, most of them go to North Mason, but they kind of stand on their own, and they've always done very well. They have something, what was it, their math scores were one of the best in the state this last time around, as well as English, and they really do well up there, but that was a wonderful event. Peninsula Regional Transportation and Planning Organization, did I get it right that time?
Yeah.
Okay. Attended that, to talk about some of the different things going on there. With that, I made a connection with the mayor of Port Angeles in discussions of bringing that region into the West Sound Alliance, so that we can expand our legislative touch there in regard to transportation. Little League had their opening day, that was an incredible event, watching the little kids. And although next year, I think they'll be smart, and they'll put the older kids out in the field, because they take them out in groups, they'll put the older kids out in the field first. You don't take the five-year-olds and throw them out there first, and they're out there for 20 minutes, by the time it's over with, they're running all over the place, and trying to control that, when the older kids finally hit the field. Let's see, Belfair Elementary had an auction for their fifth-grade camp, it was extremely well-attended, the room was completely packed, and I hear that they grossed in just the auction over $12,000, which for Little Belfair, that's not too bad. Then we had our briefings, which Commissioner Sheldon explained a lot of things we did there. This, next week, we'll have a League of Women Voters Lunch. Sherry Appleton is coming out, and Mike Olson, former council member of Shelton Commissioner, will be there. They'll be talking about the different benefits between the commission and the council, and perhaps the difference in the numbers. And Sherry Appleton is the House Chair of the Local Government Committee. Let's see, I'll have a business retention meeting with the EDC. I'll be meeting with some local businesses again on the road widening. Let's see, I'll have a business retention meeting with the EDC. I'll be meeting with some local businesses again on the road widening. Because of the way this is handling and all, all the different delays, it is affecting their businesses, and they keep wondering how we can get past some of these roadblocks. I may be attending a luncheon with women Democrats out here, event they haven't. I also have an appointment to meet with a few of the local people because of the road widening in regards to liabilities. The law says these, these connections, these driveways that are connecting to the highway have to be at a certain angle, at a certain height, and so much clearance before coming on. So because of that, some of these properties have really lost a lot of property. There's a couple of them, like the Masonic Lodge there, that literally they've had to build a roundabout to get up to that level, and it's taken up quite a bit. Well, then all of a sudden, some of these groups got together and started asking the question, what happens if somebody falls off of these things? And what's the liabilities, and whose responsibility is that? And that's a big question. So we're going to get some more information from them and try and find out where the liability issues end, and try to help them to protect themselves on that. North Mason Chamber of Commerce lunch. I'm hoping to meet with Mayor Lent and Port of Bremerton Commissioner in regards to potential development going up on Inzkiya. Mount Moriah Board Meeting. North Mason Community Voice is having a meeting up in Belfair. And the TPCAP, our TPCAP group is their guest speaker. And then that brings us back to our briefings, and we start all over again.
I'll try to be quick as well. Last week I attended the, I don't have my calendar in front of me, so I'm working off memory. The Economic Development Council's industry roundtables have been phenomenally informative and helpful, and I look forward to seeing the final report. But last week was the forest products industry, and two things kind of rose to the top. Number one, that we potentially should be jumping onto opportunities for the research into some of the value-added products in the forest product, such as biofuels and cross-laminated timber. What can we do to be on the forefront of encouraging those two technologies? And like I said to the group, industry has been our heritage, or forestry has been our heritage, but it needs to be our future. And so we have to be pretty proactive to keep it going. The other issue that came to the top was that we see the U.S. Forest Service decreasing year after year after year, the amount of land that can be harvested. That's federally owned. The state, you know, foresters agreed that the State Department of Natural Resources has been managing their lands very well with harvest. But the feds, it's just so hard to get them to open those lands up. And that was the original intention of the U.S. Forest Service when it was first created. And somewhere along the line, it turned into a preservation agency. And so it's, it's making an impact on foresters. Let's see, I had a meeting of the Behavioral Health Organization. I met with our prosecutor on some number of issues, a very good meeting with him, about two hours. And he will be calling for a briefing to meet with us and the judges and our Public Defense Office about some alternatives to the, how to treat the infraction, or the charge of driving with license suspended three. It is clogging up our courts. It's clogging up, not necessarily our jails, but it's definitely eating a lot of our public defense dollars and taking a lot of the prosecutor's time. And there's some alternatives around that. I didn't know that you could have your license suspended for not paying child support. It's not always a driving infraction that people are getting their license taken away.
Fishing license, your hunting license.
So we'll be hearing from him on that, and I spoke about a few other issues. Let's see, I was at the Greatview School, grand opening. I will be at the League of Women Voters meeting today. I will be at the North Mason Voice meeting to hear their, their input to our Transportation Advisory Group. Mason Transit Authority meeting today. Hope that you are able to attend. We've got a couple of major decisions to discuss. Have a criminal justice working team meeting Wednesday. Is there an industry roundtable this week?
I don't have one on my.
Okay, so I don't think I have that.
No, they were going back to back. I couldn't find one on my calendar. I was worried about that, too.
Okay. Let's see, I have a law library meeting. I'll be meeting with representatives or owners of Cooper Studios around some issues they want to discuss regarding tourism promotion. And on the same topic, our contracted marketing agency, Blue Collar Agency, will be having a forum, open forum, for our tourism stakeholders on Friday at 1:00 at the Alderbrook. All are invited. You'll probably get some good food.
At Alderbrook. Do you want to be there, Commissioner?
I will be there.
I may be there also, so we may both be there.
I didn't mention, when you're done.
And just one more. I think it's this week. I'm working on memory again, is a work session with our Behavioral Health Organization, talk about the structure.
Before you go, I want to compliment you, Commissioner. We tasked you and asked you to move forward with the prosecutive attorneys and trying to find a way to balance and bring down our caseloads. I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate your efforts of pulling them together. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Second that. I want to mention that on Wednesday, tomorrow, the 20th, 7:30 in the morning, EDC is having a breakfast at the golf course. I'll be there. To report on the last legislative session.
What's EDCR?
Yes.
I don't have that in my calendar, but I'm probably going to have to be there.
And I think they're, yeah, and then it's at the golf course, right?
The golf course starts at 7:30.
Can't be there because of criminal justice.
Two questions, Commissioner Nethan, you mentioned Sweetwater Park and a bid, going out to bid. Who would go out?
No, no, separate, separate issues. They just sent a letter of support.
Coordinating Council?
Yes. Had nothing to do, where we've been going on the Coordinating Council is we started off with getting control over giving out money. And then we made it so they had to go over a priority array and an action array together, which changed how it all worked and who received money. But we've been moving forward towards the idea of going out for bids on projects, because they don't seem to want to do some of the projects that will benefit the ecosystem. The greatest, my best way to explain it is, everybody wants to bid this week before, but nobody wants to bid cleaning the toilet. And some of these big things are pretty bad and have to be done. When the Skokomish Tribe went out for bids, everybody bid on the little easy ones. Nobody would bid on the ones that had the greater impact. So Hidcanow Coordinating Council is moving forward with creating a system where we will go out for bids on some of these things that have to and should be done, which is brand-new in any of these industries, you know.
Are they going to administer the money?
Yeah, they, they already receive monies.
Okay, well, why don't they go out to bid anyway?
They never have. You were on the board a lot longer than I was.
Always been a grant program.
Yeah. This is something new that we've just started to force. As a matter of fact, there was a point, two years ago, I think they wanted to kill us, because we actually, Mason County, remember all the turmoil. We came in, we actually froze the money for a while, teamed up, froze the money, until we could find a way to do it better. And this is just the progression of doing it better, so that the money actually goes for greater impact and not personal relationships. That's my, those are my words, not theirs. I just felt there was a lot of personal relationships that got rewarded instead of the projects. I remember one particular, they had an extra $10,000 that they were going to allocate. And when they were deciding who they were going to give the money to, the last, the question that nobody ever asked was, what was the benefit to the fish or restoration when we're giving out the money? It was just personal relationships on the phone. I was just amazed. But that, that has changed a lot. And we put some of our locals on the citizens' boards, and you know, Lisa Vota, he's pretty straight, arrow-hard guy, working his rear end off and helping to keep them straight on that end of it, too. It's completely different.
Just the other thing I was going to mention to you, that you said you were going to meet with the League of Women Voters and Sherry Appleton about, about commission forms or forms of government.
Just attending that.
Oh, yeah. I was just going to say that maybe people don't know that there used to be only three cities in Washington that had a commission form of government. Wenatchee, Raymond, and Shelton. And Raymond changed, and then I ran a bill with, from a representative from Wenatchee, and Wenatchee fell off the list. So Shelton is now the only remaining city, how many cities in the state of Washington?
216, West Island.
216 cities that has a commission form of government.
And I suspect what they'll also discuss, then the alternative for a county is a charter county, where you elect, and generally is a petition from the voters, where you elect a charter development committee to develop our own charter, much like your state constitution. And you can take positions that are normally not electable, or, and you can, and add those, such as Clalum County added an elected community development director, which, you know, served their needs. I mean, I suspect they'll be discussing that as well.
And there are also elected positions that are, that are currently elected in the county that are, are just appointed in some of those charter counties. Such as the Sheriff's Department. There's a lot of different things that happen with it, but they're pretty hard to get through.
You always have to elect your sheriff. That's in the Constitution.
I thought that we have one county that is now.
I don't, I don't believe so.
Well, that's worth discovering. I just wanted to also share that I'll be meeting after this meeting with a representative from a private company that is asking the state to provide a certificate of need for a 75-bed psychiatric hospital in the City of Lacey, including a detox facility. This is a much-needed facility, and we're going to be asked, and I'll be asking the commission whether or not you would like to send a letter of support for this. It's definitely a need. But the issue that will arise probably out of this and others is that we have a workforce shortage of behavioral health therapists. Is there anything else to come before this?
I just want to add, I'm not in favor, just so we know, just because we're talking about not in favor of charter counties for a different reason, though, not because of how they structure it. But there are other taxation things that become quite easier to do through.
That's true.
Charters, and that's always scares the heck out of me. If we make it and leave it out there as an option, eventually somebody will take that option, run with it, charge more.
Commissioner Nethan, I did want to thank and congratulate you for the work you've done on the Hidcanow Coordinating Council. We had one of the members of the council say to me at one point that, you know, due to Mason County and your work, we have cleaned up the operations of that council, and I know you took that to heart, and you worked really hard on making it a very fair process regarding the distribution of our salmon recovery monies. And thank you for your kind of.
I appreciate that. I got to remind you, it was funny, because when we first did it, it was a team effort. It wasn't me. We were our only team. We only had one vote, but we were our only team, and we were in there working it as though we had two votes. And then the Skokomish Tribe, and we had two. And then, to be honest with you, the commission was there for Bremerton, or from Kentsel County, we tricked him. Into one vote, and then we gained control for a short time. But no, it was funny, because we would, we would just work it back and forth as though there was a team of voters in there. It eventually worked. So pat on the back for you as well.
I'm really glad if it has it. I'm really glad it's improved. I was a chair in 2005 and 2006. And during that time, we had a lot of discussions about just leaving the Hidcanow Coordinating Council. It's a very difficult organization, so I'm glad it's improved.
And you guys had that discussion when we first, when I first came in, and we took that seriously. I explained to them at the time, they're not talking anymore about whether they can keep us. It's whether to have us back. Because you guys, as far as we were concerned, had already given notice you were pulling out. And so they had to earn our, our trust. They didn't even have a budget. $7 million and no budget. So they had a long, long way to go to keep Mason County.
So any other discussion? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move for me adjourn. Second.
That was you that did that. In a good way, but it was you. I remember, just hit me. That was you that stood up on that one.